Welcome back to our Leadership as a Contact sport. I am your host, Steve Harper. Today I am joined by school board member Crystal Drake. Crystal is the school board president of the Glades County School District, and she's a former teacher, someone that knows and understands and appreciates the challenges school districts are facing right now, and especially how important leadership is. I'm very excited she agreed to be a part of this interview, and I can't wait to dive in and learn a little bit more about her journey and her approach to what school leaders need to know today. So with no further ado, let's dive in. Mr. Drake, thank you so much for joining us for Leadership as a Contact sport. How are you doing today?
I'm feeling great. I substituted for some fifth grade students today, so I'm really-
Oh wow!
Yeah, yeah.
So you're still actually substituting in the classroom?
Once in a while. I just did it as a personal favor to a friend of mine who went on vacation, so. But I do like keeping my foot in the door in different schools, so it was a private Christian school that I was in today.
Oh excellent. Well, that's great. Well, I appreciate you making time after, you know, probably what was a long morning, I would imagine.
It was fun. It was fun.
That's great. Well, you know, before we dive in, what I would like to do is get a little sense, because you are technically our first school board member, and I've got lots of questions I want to ask you about leadership and your approach to how you see some of the challenges school districts are facing. But I'd love to have you share just a little bit with our audience, a little bit of your career path and what ultimately led you, you know, to, you know, when you, when you left education, you know, to go forward and be a part of the school boards. Maybe you can just give us a little insight of the path.
Okay. Well, I was a second career teacher. I was in banking for several years. I was in retail a little while. And I have two children, but my oldest child, my son, always struggled in school. Beginning in second grade, he began struggling with reading, and I did not really know how to help, you know. I, I took the brownies to the bake sale and chaperoned the field trips and, you know, tried to be involved to the extent that I was allowed to be involved. And when he entered middle school, he began to struggle even more. And I started subbing substitute teaching at that time when he was in middle school. And he graduated in 98, so this was probably back in, you know, around 1994, when I was at the middle school level. And I loved it. I loved working with the kids. My kids' friends were all there. And so I thought, you know, I can do this. In fact, I can do better than these teachers here. And so I went back to college and finished my degree. My goal was to have my degree before I turned 40. And I was 39 when I completed my first, my bachelor's degree. So then I went in the classroom at that same school where I've been subbing and loved it. I loved teaching. And I was able to tutor my son, and he actually did one semester at college, which was a shock to everyone that knew him. He decided last minute, you want to go to college, and it was crazy. But anyway, I just, I just really love the education environment. And I worked at a high school here, and then we have a really unique school in our district. We have a charter school that is on an Indian reservation, and it's the only charter school, I believe, east of the Mississippi that has what we have. We have some private Native American schools, but this one is a charter school with our district. And so I did go out there and worked three years and loved it. That was amazing. I've worked for Florida Virtual School one summer, didn't like that at all. I need the human interaction. I just fell in love with education and taught at several different schools. And then as I was nearing my teaching career, an opening came up on the school board. A longtime member was retiring. I was in that district. And so I did put in my paperwork and I was unopposed, so that was great.
Nice.
But then I did have to resign teaching in the district. So I went next door to the county next door and taught over there about three years. But it was really hard teaching full-time and doing the school board job, and it was very, very difficult. So I now just, you know, do a little bit of on-the-side subbing, have a consulting, education consulting business, and, and school board. It keeps me busy.
Yeah, well, and what do you do with your free time? It sounds like you've got a lot going on. Let me ask you, because you came in through, you know, the, the classroom, you've gotten to see, I would imagine, probably, especially with the multiple places that you were at, some good leadership and maybe some not-so-good leadership. What, what do you think makes a good school district leader? And from a teacher's perspective, what's important for a teacher to see in that leader in order to be inspired and motivated to get up every day and do what you have to do?
Well, that's a great question. I don't really have a succinct answer to that. But I try to lead by, first of all, not asking anyone to do something I wouldn't myself want to do. That's always a good litmus test. Is this something as a teacher that I would think is appropriate? But being a leader, I think, requires the number one trait that I think really helps a lot is being a good listener. And as a school board member, I get parent calls. I get a lot of teacher calls, especially in the beginning when I first got on, and really people just want someone to listen. And instead of trying to solve the problem for them, if I just listen, my friend is a guidance counselor, and she told me years ago that people usually know the answer to their problems. And if you will just listen to them, they will talk themselves to it.
Sure.
I find a lot of wisdom in that, so I try to be-
Very much so.
I try not to plan what I'm going to say next. You know, I try to really hone in and, and really make sure I'm understanding. But I think on the teacher's side, as an employee, you want to be heard. You want to know that somebody is listening and taking you seriously and trying to accommodate your requests and trying to make it easier for you, because teaching is so challenging. And, and what I saw is sometimes in schools, leadership is former teachers, right? So they get into administration, they were formerly a teacher. That's the normal route. But we always used to say, when I was still in the classroom, that they've been out of the classroom too long. You know, because once a teacher gets the desk and, you know, no kids in their face, and, you know, they're on the phone or email all day, they lose, I think, some of them lose that empathy and understanding of what it's like to face those kids every morning, because they come ready. Whether you're ready or not, they're ready.
They're there. Yep.
So I think listening and, and just, just doing your best to try to solve problems when they're brought to you and let the people help you solve them.
We, we have this very unusual audience of fairly new superintendents that have tuned into this series. And I think what you just shared there, I think, is a really good point, and you don't want to lose sight of it, because I think it's, it's real critical that when you get put into a role in leadership, it's easy to get caught up into the administrative minutia, but you have to remember where you came from. And getting back and spending some time in the classroom, I recently interviewed a superintendent who said her best day of the entire week is finding a school and a classroom to go spend time in. And it isn't just a five-minute drop-by. She pays attention, she participates, she's active and engaged. And she said it has allowed her to really build some culture with her teachers of trust, because it isn't her just saying what she's doing, it's her actually doing it and being visible and being a part of what they're going through on a day-to-day basis. And she said sometimes, you know, you see the good, bad, and the ugly, right? And oftentimes, there's, there's challenges that even teachers have learned to put up with. It's an administrator coming in, they can see different ways that they might approach maybe a difficult child or, you know, a group of students that are struggling in some capacity. Just having that outside influence can be beneficial. But she said her payoff was that it kept her close to the classroom, which she always loved, but, and reluctantly left, actually, to move into administration. Do you think that's a, do you think that's something that a lot of leaders should do, especially young superintendents?
Absolutely. And in fact, our superintendent did that very thing, because, you know, we have teacher shortages in Florida as well as across the nation. And we couldn't fill one of our positions. School was about to start. And we had a newly-elected superintendent, and she went over to the high school and taught a class for a whole semester. And she really loved it, and it really, I think, opened her eyes, because she had been an elementary teacher in her background. So it was, I believe, her first experience with high school. And the stories that she would tell and just the way that she had a new understanding of what we were really dealing with, what our teachers were dealing with on a day-to-day basis, all the problems and the personal things that come into the classroom with these old, this older group of kids. And I think that was an excellent, and that's what I get out of substituting, because I'm still getting in there, I'm hearing what kids are talking about, I'm seeing the cell phone use, you know. So, so you get that up close and personal, that, that other people can try to explain it, but unless you've experienced it yourself, it's hard to relay that. So I think that's a great practice for a superintendent to just go in and sit down and watch a teacher or, you know, ask the teacher if they could co-teach a lesson would be awesome. I think that would be great.
Yeah.
For everyone.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that I agree wholeheartedly. You know, as, as many of these superintendents are coming into this, you know, first leadership role at that level, one of the challenges that's come up over and over again, which I think you could add some very unique perspective to, is there is oftentimes, you know, you're, you're unique in terms of a board member that I know that has been in education and has moved into a school board role. I think most of the school board members I've known have had, you know, outside business influence and interests. And then, you know, there's a little bit of political ego that can sometimes get tied up in, in going for a school board role and in pursuit of maybe something else politically down the road. These new superintendents really seem to struggle to align with their board. What do you, what do you recommend to these superintendents on how to get those relationships kicked off so that communication can happen and there can be collaboration and realize that this is, you know, an opportunity to, you know, to make it a win-win situation for all involved on the board?
Right. I think that, that's a really good point, because that communication between board member and superintendent is absolutely crucial. And across the country, there are different scenarios. We have, even in Florida, we have elected superintendents, which is what I have, and then we have appointed superintendents in about half the state. And so the dynamic there is different in whether you did the hiring. My, the first superintendent I worked for was very clear with me right up front, "I don't work for you, and you don't work for me," you know, and just kind of put that, that line in the sand kind of for me, like. So, so finding that, and I've been told by someone who is actually a member of our state Board of Education in Florida, that that relationship, superintendent, board member, regardless, appointed or elected, is just by nature a little adversarial, because you're both kind of, you want the same things, you want what's best for kids, but a lot of times you see it differently, you have a different approach. So getting that communication to a place where you can agree to disagree is super important, to be able to express your opinion, even when it is counter to your superintendent, and have a superintendent that can receive that in a professional way. And, and I, I'm so blessed right now, because I have a superintendent that, that we've really worked through a lot of things, a lot of issues, and we've had, you know, some of these times. But I have always felt respected. You know, there was one time when things got a little heated and I, you know, I just, okay, calm down, but we've been able to really talk through some really tough things and then maybe text each other the next day, just to kind of make sure everything's okay, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
There's just such difficult conversations that you have to have.
Sure.
And perspective is everything, and as I've grown older, I've come to understand how important perspective is, because we all think we're right. From our perspective, we probably are right. But if we just shift a little and look through another lens, we're going to see things we're missing. And to be mature enough to recognize, okay, this is what it looks like from here, but I'm sure I don't have the whole picture.
Yeah.
Give me your piece of it, and then we're going to pull in this. The picture is just so big. There's so much, so many nuances to these education issues that one person cannot possibly understand it and have complete meaning of everything. It would be impossible.
I love that you have that relationship. I love that you shared that, because I think that's really important. It's, it's possible to get there. It's possible to create an environment where you may not always agree all the time, because, you know, everybody, like you said, comes at it with their own perspective, sometimes their own agenda. But if people can come to the table at least willing to listen as well as share, you've already set things in motion to potentially have a more collaborative relationship. You and I were talking offline, and you said something to me previously that really stuck out to me. In fact, I shared it recently on another interview, but you had said that you had seen a study that said that school boards, and when a superintendent and a school board don't get along, that school district tends to struggle, right?
Yes, there are studies that show a direct correlation between the relationships among the board and superintendent that correlates to student test scores, which kind of blew my mind, because that seems so far apart. But I think the board and the superintendent relationships really sets the tone for your whole district. Some people try to pit the superintendent against school board members, or vice versa, or member against member, because when you upset that tone of professionalism, "we're all here for the, for the kids to make a better school district." When you start getting personalities and politics and all that involved in that, I really, I kind of can see how that would trickle down to your teachers and then your students, because we don't all have to agree, and we don't all have to see it the same, but we have to all move forward together, put mistakes behind us and move forward, not just as a school district, but we've had some, some things with our community where we've kind of butted heads with different people in our community. And it's not been good for our district or for the community. And so we've had to work through some really hard things and have some really difficult conversations. And, you know, I hope that we're to the point where we can just move forward and, and keep, keep pushing things ahead and not get bogged down in who's mad at who and who didn't vote for who. And, you know, it can just get so petty so quick.
Yeah.
We have to really guard against that.
Well, and it's tough, because I think at the end of the day, I, my guess, and I could be going out on a limb here and be completely wrong, is you hear way more negative than you ever hear positive in your role, right?
Absolutely. Someone told me yesterday, I was at a volleyball practice with my granddaughter, and a lady said to me, "Wow, you're, y'all are really doing something right with your, with your school district." And I said, "What? Tell me, please, what is it? Can you put it on Facebook?" Because you don't get that. You get, "This is wrong, and this is wrong, and why did you do it this way? And why don't you do it that way? And, you know, why didn't you?" It's, it's endless, the criticism that you get. And so when someone does give you a compliment, boy, your ears perk up.
Want to get those T-shirts printed up with that quote, for sure.
Well, I enjoyed that conversation, yes.
I bet you did. That's, that's good. That's, that's a heck of a win right there, right? Well, and it's true, I think, even for, you know, the superintendent, assistant superintendents, and principals, and vice principals, all the way down to the classroom at the teacher level. It's, you know, a lot of times, there's more negative than shared in the positive. What do you think we could do from a school district culture perspective to promote more of a concept of creating a culture of positivity? And, and obviously, we want to do that for the kids. That's, that's the most important, right? But really, there's also a real need at every level of a staff, because there's so much pressure and so much responsibility. And I don't care if you are working the cafeteria, or you're taking out the trash, or you're leading a classroom of fifth graders, or you're up in administration. What do you see, in your opinion, based on what you've experienced throughout your career? What, what could be done to create more of a culture of positivity at a particular district?
Well, I think, you know, we do it for students. We have programs like PBIS, Positive Behavior Support, and we try to encourage teachers to point out when students are doing positive behaviors, exhibiting them. And, but we probably can do more with each other. I know some principals I've had have been very good about, you know, if they did come in for a formal evaluation or just simply walking through, would then give me a note, you know, "Crystal, I really liked what I saw today." And it's such a little thing, and you think you're adults, you don't need that pat on the back, and, you know, but it just gives you that little bit of extra incentive to keep being positive, because the negative really can wear on you after a while. We did an activity, I'm a, don't mean to put a plug in here, but I am a certified energy bus trainer, and there is an activity that they do where you put sticky notes on the backs of people that you work with, your peers. It's a room of teachers, and they write down what they like about that person, and it's anonymous. They don't sign it. They stick it on your back, and it's really amazing when you do that activity with a group of teachers, when they take those notes off and they begin to read them, and we have them read them out loud. I mean, many of them are crying and choking up, and for them to realize that their peers, that there is something about them that their peers like and appreciate and admire, they seem so surprised. So I think we kind of, especially in high schools, I know in high schools we do this. We go in our room, we shut the door, and we isolate ourselves, you know, we get in our silo and, you know. And I think elementary teachers are a little better about sharing with each other. But I think that peer-to-peer, because when your peer compliments something about you, you know they walk in your shoes every day.
Yep.
So it's genuine, you know they know what you experienced and what they're talking about. So maybe that, I know as a board member, I try to do that for teachers. I try to, you know, when they post on Facebook, I try to put positive comments and send notes and cards when I can. But I just think our whole culture needs to focus more on the positives and build one another up more, because like you said, our culture is pushing us all down all the time with trying to compare us and pit us against one another. So I think it's going to take a concerted effort from people to be positive and uplift one another, to make a cultural impact.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's a great reminder for everyone that will watch this to realize that every, you know, I'm, you know, I wrote this book called The Ripple Effect. I'm all about taking action to make a difference, right? But every action has a reaction. When you're, you share a compliment or something that you really admire or respect about a colleague, or even, even, you know, your administration, and, and, you know, upwards and downwards, right? These things have this major impact, and, you know, they're, they're real positive. Seems true, though, you know, positive ripples come from those things, but also so do the negative ones. If we're constantly, you know, comparing people, or we're constantly telling them what they're doing wrong as opposed to pointing out what they're doing right, it really wears on you. And, and I think, you know, one of the challenges I think educators at every level have is, you know, how do I retain the kind of, you know, people that we need in order to be successful as a school district? We're only as good as our people, and so trying to find ways to really focus on more of the positives and, and, you know, not, not saying you blow, you know, blow smoke, but, you know, at the end of the day, you're, you are committed to showing up and saying, "Hey, I recognize and see what you're doing, and I appreciate you for what you're doing," which is exactly why, when you were explaining the volleyball story, right? You lit up, because that is, it's rare, but it made you feel good, and it was a positive experience, and that was a heck of a ripple, right?
Right, absolutely. I like what you said about it's going to have a ripple effect, and it's either going to be positive or negative.
Yep. And, and we, we have that choice. Yep, yeah, absolutely. We have the choices to whether we're going to make it a positive or a negative, and that's kind of the key thing. I know from a school board perspective, you deal with a whole lot of different issues. But one of the things that I have to expect is probably high on that list is, is teacher retention. And with all the challenges that are going on in, you know, educational environments around the country, what could you tell us about what your school board does differently in order to, you know, make sure that you're doing everything possible to retain the best teachers?
Well, I think that's an area where we can always improve. What we, we're rural. We're in the middle of nowhere. We don't have a grocery store. In our entire county, you have to drive 20 minutes to the nearest Walmart to get groceries. Public is about an hour drive from here. So you have to be a unique person to want to live in that, right?
Yep.
We don't have a movie theater, a bowling alley. We don't have any of those amenities that you would have. So, but what we do have, our theme for our county is gloriously natural, Glades County. We have a beautiful lake. I live on Lake Okeechobee. We have tributaries that flow into the lake for canoeing and hiking. And so we have those things that those cities in Florida on the coast have no longer have.
Yeah.
Have a treasure here, but it takes a certain person to recognize and appreciate that. So, and we've had good luck when we get single people in and they find a spouse within the district, and they get married, and then they stay here, because it is such a small district that you know everybody, everybody knows you. I used to joke, when my kids were out, you know, as teenagers, I would get a call before they got home to tell me what they were doing and they were, that they shouldn't have been. So, you know, there's a lot of good perks for that, living in a small area.
Unless you happen to be the teenager, then maybe not so much.
That reminds me of a story that I'm going to tell quickly, because you edit it out if you need to. But so I parked my, my vehicle, and a friend and I were doing a long walk. We walked the perimeter of Lake Okeechobee. It's, it's 122 miles, I think. Of course, we did it in a series of walks. But my car was parked at this spot, this remote location for several hours. Well, one of the deputies saw my car, knew it was my car, called me on my cell phone to check on me. "Hey, Ms. Drake, I see your car. Are you okay?" I'm like, "How, you know, that doesn't happen."
Yeah.
I mean, they might tow it and get it off the road, but, you know, so, so you have to find people that want that, that want that. Small community where other people are helping you raise your kids. And, and so we do a Grow Your Own program, and we have had success with that. The university works with us on that, and we have a collegiate program where our kids graduate with a two-year degree. So we're trying to get those kids to come in as teachers aides with their AA degree, and then while they're finishing their bachelor's, hopefully grooming them. And we, our superintendent has actually offered them and promised them teaching jobs with our district if they complete the program like that. So we haven't had anyone, any of our students complete it yet and do that, but I look forward to that, because really, we've had people that have gotten a job here, come to town, look around, and leave, you know? Like, like I'm, I can't live there. I can't work there. So it does take a unique person to want to be here, but once we can rope them in and get them fishing on the lake or hunting in the hunting club or something, then we can keep them, but.
That sounds like paradise. I want to move there now, so.
You have to be a special person, a special place.
That's awesome. Let me ask you, what is the most surprising thing that you have come to experience making the switch from being in the classroom to being on the school board? What has surprised you?
Well, the learning curve surprised me, because I thought, having been a teacher, I knew all the ins and outs of a school district, right? Like, I, I, there was just such a huge learning curve, and I'm in my second term now, and I'm still learning every day. School finance in Florida is crazy. It's just a nightmare to try to understand it and budget for it, because it's based on our student population, which changes, and then you're, what you thought you were going to get, you don't get. So, you know, people in normal operations don't understand that with school finance. So learning school finance has been huge for me, and as I said, I'm still working on it. Another one is navigating my lane. Like, I want to be the superintendent a lot of days. And when I first got on the board, that was really tough, because I realized a lot of the things that I thought I would get to do as a board member were not my lane. And so, you know, that was a struggle for me to, you know, scoot over and get my nose out of certain things. And I have gotten a lot better. I do find myself sometimes getting over there, and, but that was, that's hard. That's really hard. And the public doesn't understand that either. They think that they can call you up and tell you their problem, and that you're just going to call the superintendent, and they're going to do it, because you're a school board member. And that's, you know, there's, you know, personnel, for example- And that's, you know, there's, you know, personnel, for example, that is all superintendent, right? They hire, they fire. Well, we get a lot of calls about that. And that is, there's really not a lot that we can do about that. In fact, our own board years ago was sued for not following protocol on, you know, the superintendent's personnel decisions. So I really tiptoe around that one a lot to make sure that we don't, you know, find ourselves in a lawsuit. So those are the kinds of things I've struggled with. I think finance and, and staying in my lane and, and just really learning to navigate my lane. Like now, if I'm in it, I don't want to be lazy. I don't want to not do what I'm supposed to be doing. And so just learning how to be assertive without, but staying in my lane. You know, doing the things well that I'm supposed to do.
Wow, that's excellent.
I'm working on it.
That's what good leaders do. They know that, that it's never complete. You're always evolving. You're always learning. You're always practicing to get better. And I think that's fantastic. And I could see that when we did our pre-interview that you are, you're a person that walks the talk and I, I love that. For someone who's maybe out there, one of the things that I really love about this series is it's not only being well received by school district leadership, but it's also getting some attention from school, excuse me, from business leaders, entrepreneurs and people that want to support their school systems. My question to you would be, if someone was out there thinking about being a board member, what might you suggest to them about exploring or learning about that as an opportunity to get involved and make a positive difference for their school district?
Well, I just got off the phone right before you today with a brand new school board member that I'm going to be mentoring in another county in Florida. And the advice that I gave her, I asked her, kind of what you just said, what made you want to be a school board member? But I also said, so the biggest mistake I made was coming in like a wrecking ball. Like this is what I want to do and this is how we're going to do it. And, you know, I'm going to fix this place, you know, I kind of had that attitude. And it, it did not go over well and I would not suggest it. I really think that as a new board member, you need to sit back for at least six months to a year and just take everything in, learn all that you can learn, watch, listen, and save your list for about a year in. But the girl that I was referred to earlier, her experience was financial analysis. And I said, wow, you would make a great board member with that skill. So look at the skills that you have and ask yourself, what do I have that I could offer to the board that maybe they're lacking at this time? And we've been really blessed in the diversity of our board. We have a longtime business owner that is on there. We had a person who worked for the county in the planning and zoning department. That was a big help to us. We have a former principal. We had a former teacher. We had a former bus driver and cafeteria lady on there. So we had a lot of diversity in backgrounds and it helped so much. So they say a former teacher is a really terrible school board member. They, they do. They say we're not good. So I've really tried to work against that. But I see what they're, where they're coming from because you do need your business people. You need your finance people. You need your construction people would be great on a school board. So it takes all kinds of perspectives, like we were talking earlier, about how everybody's perspective is different. So if you all have the same background, they're not going to be as diverse and you won't get as full of a picture. So anybody that wants to serve and be a servant leader and wants good things for your community, because your community really revolves around your school district.
Yep.
Really does. We produce the workers for the community and, and the work ethic and just the culture. So I say, if you think you have something to offer, go for it.
Go for it. I love that. I love that. Well, I, I could actually talk to you all day. You are such a joy to visit with and I love your perspective. And in, in your school district is clearly so lucky to have you still active and engaged as a school board member. I want to, want to wrap up with a couple of ripple connection questions. I tend to ask these questions because they kind of give us a little more insight as to who you are as an individual. And they're just kind of fun to ask and fun to answer if you're okay with it. You might, you might have locked up right there. I'm not sure. I'm getting, did you hear what I said?
Yeah, you've got some questions that are scaring me. I heard that.
I was a little concerned because you had that look on the frozen view like, oh. No, these questions are, they're, they're fun to ask, fun to answer. So there's nothing to worry about. What did, what did the seven-year-old version of Crystal want to be when she grew up?
Ah, I think I wanted to be a lawyer. I'm pretty sure I wanted to be a lawyer because I love to argue. So, yeah, I didn't, I didn't hit that goal.
Yeah. That, well, you know, that, that's okay. But, uh, you know, that's, that's a, that's an unusual one. I also wanted to be a lawyer at about that age so that we have that in common. What is your superpower?
Well, being married, being happily married, I think is a superpower today. My husband and I both have, have fought very hard to keep our marriage and it's taken absolute superpowers to keep it together. We're Christians and we have put Jesus in the center of it. And that's been the glue that's held us together. And even though it's been very difficult, we're, we're still working at our marriage and it just gets better and better. So, and that's not very funny, but it's, I, I think in today's culture, being married is, is, is unnatural almost to stay married. So.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm, I, I love that answer. I think a lot of people love that answer. It's, it's, and you're right. It, there's, there's attitude shifts that, you know, it, it used to be a foregone conclusion. You'd be married, you know, for the rest of your life. But it doesn't always happen that way. You got to fight for it. You got to work for it. So congratulations on, on your journey there. If there was a billboard that everybody could drive by every single day with a piece of advice on it that you could put, what would it be?
I, I love education and that's the heart of who I am is education. So I would want it to say something like, consider a career in education. You'll never regret it. Be a teacher. I, I just feel like sometimes our profession is, doesn't, um, people don't realize how important it is.
Yep.
But I know from personal experience how important it is to have that connection with students. And I think I told you before about my student that, um, I had this student who drove me crazy, my first year teaching. Oh my gosh, he.
Oh, I'm glad, yeah, I'm glad you're bringing this up. I forgot about that. That, yes, that, yes.
He was so bad. He was so bad. But I, there was just something about him. I could just see in him some potential and I just, I just really loved that kid. And, and I tease with him now. I say, you see all this gray hair? You put it there. And so recently we had a home, put new flooring down and people kept telling me this young man's name, my former student, how good he was. And so I hired him to come in and do the flooring in our whole house. And it was amazing. He was so meticulous. And I kept trying to get him to cut corners, you know? You don't have to pull the washer out. He's like, oh no, Ms. Drake, we're going to do this right. And it was so rewarding to see him so successful in his career and so skilled at, at what he was doing. And the job was just phenomenal. And, and I was just like, I had part of that.
Yep. You're part of that legacy right there. That's fantastic.
I loved it. It was wonderful.
I love that. Oh, that's, that's amazing. That just, it just warms your heart to hear that story and, and to, and to see that ripple that you, you know, you didn't give up and you didn't allow that, you know, the younger version of him to push you away, but you stayed engaged and involved. And look how it came full circle this many years later. I think that's wonderful. What would you like your legacy to be?
Oh, wow. Well, I'm getting at the age where you start thinking about that, actually. Well, I want, I want people to know that I deeply cared about my family, my children, my grandchildren. And that I wanted to help the other people in my life to become the best that they could be. And, uh, you know, I try to lead other people to Christ. I want that to be part of my legacy that people will say, maybe something I said. Or I know there was a lady that had a huge influence on me that never preached to me. She was just a super kind person and, and that spoke a lot to me. So I try to emulate her and just do little things for people that I hope that they'll see that there is a deeper motivation for that than simply to be nice. I want them to see the spiritual connection to my demeanor and things like that. So.
I love that.
I guess I hope they know I love Jesus and.
Yep. That's, that's great. Last two questions. What does the ripple effect mean to you when you hear it, hear those words?
Well, I have your book on my wishlist. So as soon as I get more credits on Audible, I'll be listening to it. You know, the ripple effect, it's, it's how one action is like the domino effect. You know, one action leads to something else, to something else, to something else. And I like the concept of it. I'm looking forward to reading your book because often we never see the effect that our lives have had on people or small things that we've done for people that have really made a huge impact. Like the lady that I was just talking about, she probably had no idea that her life impacted me the way it did. So I think it's just, and they, and in a, in a ripple in the water, it gets larger and larger.
Yep.
So it, it, your impact, I guess exponentially grows as it goes out. That's what I.
It does. That's, I, I love how you're, you, you explain that. I think that's the perfect perspective. And the thing that I love about it is a ripple ripples out, but it always ripples back to you in ways that you can't expect, right? So I think with that in mind, my last question is what ripple can I create for you?
Oh, I don't know. Make this, make this turn out good.
Well, you're the subject matter, so that's not going to be a problem. That's just, I mean, that's a foregone conclusion. So, you know, but we will absolutely make it turn out good. And then you have to think about what other ripples I can create for you. How about that?
Okay. Yeah. I, I will think about that.
I really, really appreciate your time today. If, if someone had like questions on what it was like to be on a board member or be a board member or was, you know, thinking about that as kind of their next step in their evolution? Or someone that just needs, um, you know, some, you know, advice or guidance that's out there in the school community? Would you, um, is there a way for people to follow you? I know you've got your consulting business. Is there, there a way that you'd want people to reach out and, and connect with you?
Probably through email would be the best way for me.
Okay.
I don't really have a website for my business. It's just. I, I mean, I have Facebook, but it's just personal. So probably my email would be fine.
And what's your, what's the best email?
Uh, my personal email is cdrake1977@gmail.com.
Perfect. Well, we'll put that in the show notes and, you know, Crystal, it is an absolute pleasure to know you. You're stuck with me as a friend. So just so you know, there you go.
Well, thank you, Steve. I enjoyed it very much. My daughter is funny because I kept telling her, I want to do a podcast. I want to do a podcast. And she was like going to buy me a microphone and I had some ideas. I, I have a friend who's actually a county commissioner and we're both females and we walk every day. And I said, you know, we need to do a podcast about women in politics.
Yeah.
So anyway, we, we never did it. We never. And so I told my daughter, oh, I'm going to be on a podcast. And she was like, oh, you've been wanting to do that. So.
Well, if you, here's my commitment to you. If you decide to do it and you and your commissioner friend decide, hey, we're going to pick that idea up and run with it, let me know. I can help you. I can get, get you, uh, you know, some good guidance on how to get it, you know, get the right equipment. It doesn't have to cost you an arm and a leg and even where to get it out so that you get on all the platforms. I, it would be an honor to help you in any way I can.
There's the ripple.
Yeah. Okay. Well, now you have to pick up that conversation with her and see if you can't get that going. So.
All right. That'd be great.
All right. Well, I appreciate it so much. Thank you for the time today. And for those of you that are tuning into this series, we appreciate it. And, you know, we would love for you to leave any comments or any thoughts about what you took from Crystal Drake's interview today. We greatly appreciate that as well. But as always, ripple on.